Mm-hmm.
The next goal would be to try to get this stuff out as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Have time to go over it before we head meeting.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So are we still in April then going to try for the thirtieth?
Yeah.
So it'll be the sixteenth and the thirtieth in April?
Mm-hmm, with an optional on the second for biz licenses.
So we're doing two in March and two in April plus another optional one?
No, we're not, we'll take the thirty first instead of the second, yeah. I mean, I love you guys.
I was only talking about the business licenses. I didn't know that was happening. People were waiting that long. That sucks.
What do we have for eight and just the third?
Sixteenth and the thirtieth.
Oh, we are still using?
I'm not sure. He was approved that last night.
So April sixteen and the thirtieth, and then we just have this sort of middle of the road thirty first on, on, in March that gets us both once.
No, so the thirty first doesn't work for me. I thought I was leaving on Tuesday, leaving on Monday. Sorry.
Awesome, that's bad.
Um, that, yeah, no, I, I had it in my calendar that way, but I, I thought for sure I booked it. I booked a flight out on Tuesday, but I didn't.
All right, no worries. So do we just keep the thirty first for, in case we need it for licenses or anything?
We won't need it for licenses right now. If, if, if it comes up, I will let you guys know, but rather than everyone try to book it.
No, we're also delete that.
Uh, so the first and the, the, the weeks with either council or planning commission work best for me. So that way I get a whole week where I'm actually home.
Yeah.
You guys can keep that in mind again. I'll make it work. I know Todd, we need to get through this on the time limit, so I can, I can make it work. So the first week of April is out, and this, the week of the seventh can, will you be back, Todd? And will I be enough time to get stuff together?
Yep.
What about the Thursday? Cause we don't, special meetings don't have to be on Wednesdays. So what about the ten?
So that week of the seventh, I have a planning commission meeting on Tuesday and Thursday already. So Wednesday is Wednesday and Friday and Monday are my open days.
Okay, what about the twenty third? The, the week after?
The twenty third.
Twenty third or the thirtieth?
I, I could, you have the twenty third or the thirtieth.
Four, four months are we talking about?
We're in April. We're just gonna, we're not gonna try to keep going all the way out.
Thirtieth was what we chose.
Thirtieth.
We're on the thirtieth?
But that doesn't align with what you're asking.
No, 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 but that's okay. That's what I'm saying. Just take it into consideration, but let's, let's just book it. So April thirtieth instead of the thirty first of March, correct?
Okay.
Correct.
And, and April sixteen.
Well, that's already, yeah.
April sixteenth and thirtieth.
No, we'll just do April thirtieth and then come our next scheduled meeting. We'll dis, we'll discuss what we need in May. Okay. Cause then we'll, we'll be getting a little closer. We'll be talking about what we need and all that stuff.
We still have one more meeting this month too.
So just so we're clear, the following meetings will be March nineteenth.
That's right.
Followed by April sixteen, followed by April thirtieth.
Correct.
So I have, that's what I got.
All right.
We are aligned.
Okay, does anybody know where Lucas is at?
No, who am I calling?
They're, they're not excusing or excusing.
Yeah, I don't care either. Why we got a quorum, so I'm taking a motion there.
I would move we have excuse for this.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We need a motion for the days.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
So shall we move on to new business? Turn it over to you, Todd.
Thank you, Chair Birch. So the first item that we have up tonight are talking about commercial design guidelines. It was, it was mentioned that, that gee, we came up with some commercial design guideline or residential design guidelines that were fairly generic and could be incorporated into our residential zoning code. Can we do the same thing for commercial? So I just did a little bit of looking to see what was out there and see what other, um, other small kind of rural style communities did for commercial design standards. There, there are actually a lot of commercial design standards in different jurisdictions. So what I've done in the staff report is that I put together what Toledo says, or, or discusses generally, and then I've given some specific examples from a couple of other jurisdictions. You know, some of the elements are, are generally, uh, the facade articulation and building massing. So as you're looking at the front of the building, does it appear to be a, a huge structure? Or does it appear to be, does it have a more pedestrian scale appearance, even though it might be a huge structure? And you do that by usually using offsets and then different things on the front like awnings and, and window treatments and other things to kind of break up the huge scale of, of larger buildings. So we have, um, very little in our code that's specific for that element. Woodenville, um, had buildings facade exceeding fifty feet. And then they, they have offsets, recesses, projections or other architectural features. So, you know, projections are like, um, buildings that project out over, um, elements underneath. And then you have the other way too. You can vary different facades of building. And you have to do that every twenty five feet. That's fairly prescriptive. And then you've got, um, North Bend, which, um, architectural features such as covered walkways, decorative awnings or arcades to add a pleasant interest. So those are a couple of different examples. Based on your input, I can either blend those two together and, um, kind of require different pieces of those. Or, or not, we can leave it the way it is?
I'm just trying to think how some of these communities look. They're familiar a little bit with Fort Townsend and North Bend. Um, yeah, Ellenford, so, um, but if, but if our town was similar to those, you know, just in the way they look, I think that would be attractive without being overly so. Or a burden on, you know, that owner.
My recollection of Fort Townsend is it's a lot older building.
Really?
You know, they're, they're two and three stories stone buildings. They each are pretty much uh, unique to themselves, even though they may be side by side, where we don't really have that opportunity here. We get somebody who buys a lot that fronts. And we get one long strip mall, sort of like they did with Donna's and the Hair Place and, and we did with Gallery Five. Do we want to be as prescriptive as twenty five feet or do we want to make it fifty feet? Because I, I can see the benefit to having the offsets or the breakups or the façades.
Yeah.
To stimulate eye appeal. Without making it two owners.
And applying these through zoning, I mean, you'll get them on, um, you know, when they require some sort of a planning review. When they go through like an exterior remodel, interior remodels won't trigger these. Um, but if they're in the zoning code, then when somebody goes through and if they're gonna update their building and, and put new windows in, then they'll have to comply with at least that element of the design standards, if you have glazing standards in there. You know, but you're not gonna make somebody reconstruct a facade of a building just because they're doing a remodel. You know, unless the remodel actually gets to that level where they're taking off. Usually you don't take down a whole wall or stuff like that, but, um, but these will be applied gradually over time. I mean, it'll take a long time for each of these buildings to redevelop to a state where you'll see these start to appear.
So I like, I like the things like, uh, the Shahila's, uh, code where it's saying the, the built, the building entrances have to be clearly visible, directly connected to sidewalks. I think that kind of thing seems pretty reasonable. I don't know if I'm being too picky, but I like the idea of discouraging neon colors on the, on the businesses.
Yeah, and so there are, I basically listed, um, six different design elements of buildings.
Yeah.
So that way you, you all can kind of give some feedback on which of those design elements are important. All of them, none of them, this one, that one, uh, more so this one than that one. And whatever feedback you give me, I can, I can pull these together in the draft. Something similar to what, what we did for the residential, so I, um.
At least for me, the, the, what it seems to, what seems to resonate is that Shahila's one with the, the access to the sidewalks versus the North Bend one, which is, seems a little bit out of place here to require everybody to have an awning so people can get out of the rain. And so I, it's sort of like, I kind of lean more towards the Shahila's one. It seems a little bit more reasonable.
So that one addresses the, the entries and building orientation.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have anything in your code now for that. Um, the awnings and rain shelter, um, is a different element of that, but it also supports kind of the same pedestrian friendly environment.
Yeah.
So you're saying that?
That seems to be a little more onerous for the business owner to have to do that than, than to just do something that actually will, uh, keep consistency without the, within the whole business district. I don't see everybody putting awnings for people.
Could we minimize the awning zone, require them at their entrances? Because there, there should be some protection for the people that are coming in off the street at the front door.
So either recessed entries or awnings?
Or some overhang.
Yeah, but not requiring it all the way down the sidewalk, I can see, but, but at least requiring at their entrance so that there's some relief.
That makes sense.
That's a good compromise, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking about the implications of this is gonna, like Todd said, this is gonna either force new construction to go to these standards, but not gonna force anybody else to build an awning over their place, or is it?
I don't believe it's time listener remodel.
Like, yeah.
Yeah, and only if the remodel touches the, the face of the building.
Right.
So i- if they remodel internally or something like that, it doesn't mean they have to put awnings. So they're gonna put new windows on, and we can.
Like Donna's not gonna have to do it. Tattoo guy's not gonna have to do it.
Right.
Right.
We can specify in the standards too, at what, at which point in a remodel that's, that these are intended to be triggered.
Right.
So you can say if you're changing an element that's addressed, then you'll have to comply. So if you're, if you're changing the entry of your building, well, now you get to comply with the entry standards. If you're changing the facade of your building, now you have to comply with the, the awnings. If you're altering something major of the building, now you better provide visual interest in another way. So we can, we can be specific about when they apply too, as we're including these in our code.
Yeah, but slowly but surely, it'll turn, turn over to the point where the lobby's subject to it.
Sure, eventually, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, you could use some broad targets too, to say only new construction or remodels, um, greater than fifty percent of the value of the building are required to do these. So that way you could do a lot of, you could even replace the windows and not have to comply with the windows or whatever. So, so that way your existing business owners can still dress up their buildings without being struck with extra cost of having to.
I liked that a lot. I would, I would hate for somebody to get upset about that happened then.
But it, it would take longer to implement if you do that.
Sure. Implement the design.
Yeah, you'd, it'd take longer to implement any sort of a visual change on a holistic scale.
Where everybody has it. That's a long way out.
On the other hand, from a devil's advocate point of view, I would hate to discourage remodeling because somebody's got their eye on a dollar figure because they don't wanna have to do this and this and that.
Yeah.
And they sell short on the facade of the building to the community appeal.
Right.
Just to save themselves an extra dollars.
Yeah, to make sure that these are required for new.
It's a likelihood that would be the case.
I would.
Yeah.
If I was a number, it's exactly what I.
Yeah, a new construction that wouldn't seem too prohibitive, right?
No. I mean, it'd be part of their budget.
Like the overhang or whatever they're gonna do, something simple.
But if they're gonna take out the front wall of their building and install new windows, I don't think it's that much of an extra ask to ask to put in a four or six foot awning over their entrance.
I agree with that. So maybe we do, maybe we do decide on a budget percentage to say, like, if you're replacing a window on the outside or the door, would that trigger it?
I kind of liked your idea where you did it in increments on when you're gonna be responsible for that versus the, uh, attaching a dollar figure to the remodel.
So if, so if somebody is going to replace a window in their storefront, then now they have to comply with the glazing element, so they may have to put in more windows.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I guess we need to differentiate between repair and replace. If it's a voluntary improvement to the building.
Yeah, but if they, I mean, the, the, the trigger will, usually you don't have to do a building permit to repair things that are broken with your building, right?
You got Johnny with a slingshot going through town.
Right.
Yeah.
If somebody's replacing a broken window, or if somebody's replacing a broken door or something else, they don't get a building permit for that. So there's, there's no trigger for that, that level.
Okay, makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
But, but if somebody decides, oh, well, I wanna put in some new storefront windows here because these are old and they're not weather, whatever, or they're, they're not heat resistant, or they're, you know, they're not in energy efficient, or I get cold drafty, so I'm gonna replace the windows in my storefront, well, that would require a building permit. And, and, and now you've got these that are triggered. So that may increase the cost of them because now you're saying, if, well, if you choose to implement glazing out. We're using glass and windows, but it could be, you know, the entryway or the door. If somebody decides, oh, I wanna, I wanna redo the entry to my building. Well, now it says it has to, you know, face the street front and all this stuff. Well, my door's on the side, so I can't replace it over there anymore. Now I have to move it to the front of the building. So now somebody that's doing a, a simple, something that triggers a building permit to replace the door, they've gotta move it to comply with the entry standards, if, if you choose to adopt some of those.
Well, let me have an example. The building on the corner here with, uh, uh, the beauty shop and, and the tattoo. Did, he had to get a permit, right?
What do you mean?
He had to get a building permit to do the, uh, re, refacing and all, and all the work that he did on it this last summer.
Well, well, I don't think we were doing for him the site. So I, I, I'm sure he did through this county.
With the siding? How he put this new siding?
But, you know, he put the, the rock.
Yeah.
Face on and a new awning, uh, uh. Yeah.
Awnings definitely require building permits.
So I wish I could see it right now. I wish I could look out the window and see it. I'm, I'm just curious if, if that building and the work that you did on that building, would that be, uh, you know, up to our new standard that we're talking about now?
Well, I, I think what I'm trying to get at first is, is the dividing line for when we require the new standard because it seems like you all are interested in some new standards. And then if, if we can kind of establish where those limits are.
Well, I'd like the building, if you need a permit, then okay. You need a permit to do whatever you're gonna do, then you're gonna do this, you know, for all I'm gonna do.
But only that, only those elements that apply to what you're doing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it wouldn't be good to, for us to send Rachel out. All the business owners and say, all right, you've got to do this, you've got to.
Well, they just wouldn't get a building permit, would be the way. We wouldn't approve the permit. We wouldn't send anybody out. They'd come in and they'd say, hey, I wanna, I wanna put this awning on, on my building. We'd look and say, okay, well, we have a standard for that. You have to meet this standard. And then either they meet the standard or they don't. You know, we wouldn't allow them to put up the awning, any awning unless it met our standard.
I wonder if we're making it a little too complicated, because I mean, people are used to the notion of if you're gonna upgrade your house and it doesn't come to code with the insulation, for example, on the wall, you gotta do the walls now. Things like that happen.
Well, and there's a lot of businesses here I don't think could afford to necessarily go up to meet our code, depending on what it was. And so then your Facebook businesses that aren't gonna remodel or upgrade or reside or anything, is that correct?
That's the fear with design standards. I mean, I, I mean, frankly, I, I work in a lot of communities where even the building codes are insurmountable. Because as soon as you start to open up a wall, well, now you have to start to meet building code for some of that stuff too. And, and a lot of times that'll price small businesses out of it. They just can't afford even to meet the building code for the required elements with the insulation.
A lot of our businesses need some love, including City Hall, so I think being, you know, being thoughtful of wanting these businesses to clean up, but not have to jump through a lot of financial hoops.
So then, then you require it only based on new construction and you don't require it on any remodel, or you, you go back to the dollar figure. But if, you know, the idea that, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put, y- you know, a new door and, and my entryway on here and they happen to trigger a building permit for some modifications to the, the wall or the opening.
So I think maybe the, maybe the, 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 the line here is let the existing businesses not have to comply with the code and then restrict the existing businesses that do have to comply to have a very large budget for the remodel, like you're suggesting, where if, if it's worth more than, you know, fifty percent of the building cost, then yes, do the awning. At that point, you're spending a certain amount of money, right, we're assuming? So maybe they would be more in a position to simply, uh, comply with that. I don't know. How you guys feel about that?
Well, I think the threshold's gonna be a lot less than fifty percent of the cost of the building now.
But, well, I threw that out there. I threw that out because it's a fairly high limit, so you're not gonna trigger that for many people. Not many people are gonna spend fifty percent of the assessed value of their structure.
So you let people make small little repairs that improve at the level that they can do it, at the pace they can do it. And if somebody wants to make some major project, then it's in their budget to probably do the awning thing. That's the way to.
Well, and with the rising cost of construction too, I mean, it's, it's hard to say what, you know, if you were to drop it to ten percent, you know, you probably have some of the commercial structures downtown here that are, that are as low as, as three hundred or five hundred thousand. So ten percent would be a thirty or a fifty thousand dollar remodel budget and.
Not much.
What does thirty thousand dollars get you now when you're working with a contractor?
Much.
Uh, not much.
Windows, yeah.
You know.
So, so, so that's why the percentage that I threw out, you know, at, at fifty percent of the budget, y- you know, it would probably be a hundred and fifty thousand to, and up from there. I don't think you have many structures down here that are valued at less than three hundred thousand, but.
So you wanna have us take this back and come back next meeting with some suggestions?
If you'd like.
Or did you wanna try to handle it tonight?
This was a topic that was just mentioned, um, a couple of meetings ago. And this was a leftover from our last meeting that we didn't get to dive into very much. So if you all like more time to think on it and wanna bring it back and.
I mean, I'm leaning more towards the fifty percent of the building cost triggered rather than the ten percent.
I, I, the only thing that bothers me with that is that we, nobody has really can pull up comparables to, so that we really know what we're dealing with as far as value.
Assess value. You can just use it off the assessed value.
Right.
Which isn't accurate, but it's, it, but it's a good, it's accessible and it's defined and it's, it's easy to see.
Is it, is it useful to think of these things as, as, um, this may be a sideways sort of tangent here, but there are things that are gonna be critical for us to finish in this plan that are, that.
Oh, this is something that just came up out of the zoning discussion.
That's what I, that's what I'm trying to get at, it's like.
We don't have to do this at all.
Oh, I think we should. I'm just saying, uh, as we go through this, there are probably things that are, that must get done. Uh, and so I, I don't think we all have any awareness of, I don't know what those are. So when, when these come up and we, we wanna do, we wanna help, wanna spend time doing this and figuring it out, but is this the one? And then so that's, you know what I mean? So it would be good for us to have like a participate in that timeline, so we know what we have, what our goals are to, to get through this and, and help you to finish.
So we, the city decided to update their zoning code at the same time as their comp plan because we're coming up with a new comprehensive plan. We're not, we're not actually, and, and some of these other codes that are non-compliant because we're all working on the comp plan elements. So for, for your critical areas codes and all those pieces, the, the comp plan update requires you to say, yes, we're gonna do this within the next year. But, or the next five years or whatever, put together a timeline and say when you're gonna update your code. But your code is so out of compliance, we're just updating it as we go for the elements of the comp plan. So the zoning code was something, we went a little bit further than we needed to. But it's, it's a better fit for the city in the longer run and it doesn't add that much to the cost of doing it.
Right.
So since we're touching it, this came up.
Okay.
So this isn't a required element by any means, but it's related to an element that the city's going to update. So we may as well update it now.
Okay.
Um, because it, it fits.
And can this be revisited, or do we have to wait for ten years till we visit?
Oh, no, you can change this the week after it's adopted.
Oh, okay, great. I mean, so it's our starter that we, we can modify as we go along. Cause I realized we don't even have anything for waterfront yet, cause we don't have waterfront commercially yet.
Yeah, so if, if, if council decides to adopt all this stuff and then, oh my gosh, this doesn't work, they can turn around and either patch it, fix it, or repeal it.
So start, we can start, uh, in a reasonable way and, and build as we go along. So maybe just start with, uh, you know, the minimum that we think we, we, we need and, and go from there.
You know, we're agree on the building permit trigger though. Is that, is that, everybody likes that?
Well, it's, it's hard, I mean, oth- other than that, Rachel is going out policing it and saying, hey, I see you painted your building and you didn't comply with our standard. But if you have a permit associated with it, then you have a review. And the other thing the building permit does is building permits are all based on the value of the project. So if you know the value of the project and you can look up the assessed value of the building, not the land, just the building, and, and then you, you can compare those two and you can clearly see, have you met the trigger or not? Um, or you can do it the other way, the way Chair Birch was favoring at the beginning of this discussion where you, you know, if you have certain elements that affect pedestrian or something like that, when does that apply? Well, it applies when you're moving doors around or, you know, if you're doing something to do with one of the elements, then that element applies. And that's, um, also a clear trigger that staff can use to evaluate a building permit, that they're all centered back around that building permit. Because otherwise you just have to have city staff basically policing the streets, watching for changes and saying, you gotta do this and nobody's gonna do it.
And then we had a ten percent and a fifty percent.
Well, I just threw out opposite ends of the spectrum just to.
Just outside.
Anyplace in between, or more too.
That's what I was gonna say. What about thirty percent?
Thirty or, or seventy or?
Well, I, I think, I think though we had two main, parts of this that we were trying to get through. Number one was how do we want to affect the facade? And it's, and it's continuous string of a building. Were we gonna break that up? Were we gonna be, uh, uh, break it up to twenty five foot sections, the fifty foot sections before you have some type of a, uh.
Yeah, if you take a close look, I think there's, I, I identified seven different elements. And those are all with the, I don't know if you have a black and white, but they're, they're the numbered elements. So each of those, so you've got seven different elements of architectural or building design.
Number six is the awnings and rain shelter.
Yeah, yeah. So you've got, so for each of those, I've given a couple of different, I've tried to research your code to figure out, does your code have anything in it? And, and say what it might have or the closest thing that it has. And then I've, I've looked at other communities for examples of how they might implement those into some design standards. So the, the first question is, do you want this at all in your code, or do you just wanna have commercial development be commercial development? Second question would be the trigger level. And then for each of these design elements, do all, you know, does Toledo need all seven of these design elements? Do you need a couple of them and not others?
So, uh, Steve, I was curious if you, you wanna just go through each one, start from number one and see what we think and then move to number two and just.
I think we can get through it all in quite plain, yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Yeah, or if you want more time, this isn't a pressing element. This would just be revisioned to something you've already looked at with zoning code, so.
What else we got inside? Are we doing the critical areas?
We got two, two different code sections of critical areas, uh, to get through tonight, hopefully.
Is planted by Gary Oak. What do we have on the agenda for the nineteenth?
Well, the nineteenth, I'll bring back comp plan elements to go with the two code sections that we have tonight. I'll begin to introduce some of the critical areas and I'll probably bring back, uh, the flood planes, because there won't be very much changes to that in, in the critical areas. So I'll try to bring back another critical areas element and then two comp plan. And the, those should go easier, because if we're getting into the nitty gritty on the code, then the comp plan is, I'm writing it backwards. Usually they want you to write the comp plan first that sets out, this is the vision. And then you write code to implement the vision. I'm bringing your code and then I'm gonna create the vision based on the code that you. You gotta understand those better than.
Form follows function.
Form follows function, okay.
And so I, I don't know that these are, so when you're, the ones that you picked, i- if we picked, uh, one or the other of the options that you've, you've given for the seven things, uh, this just means it, it's that one item. You're not saying we're gonna look at all of their guidelines over it.
Correct. I, I've just taken those seven and tried to come up with some examples of how other communities have addressed those in their design codes.
Okay.
So, and, you know, and I, I tried to steer clear of things like, you know, Seattle Metro and Portland Metro, because they have their own, they, they have very restrictive design standards for different places within.
So I think we can address the two different things separately. We could select which one of these we're comfortable with as we go down the list, uh, or if we don't want it at all. And then the second thing we can consider after we do that is what the triggers are. Yeah, just make a decision. If that helps, Steve, we can do it that way.
How much time do you think we have to spend on critical areas tonight?
Well, if we don't finish it tonight, we can always bring that back next time too.
Okay.
As long as you give me enough input that I can decide if I'm in the right direction or not, so I can create the comp plan.
Right, we were already on episode three, if we just started this, so let's get on it.
Let's do it. Let's do it.
The sort of articulation on building massing Toledo's code really. Doesn't specifically address it, right?
Right.
And you've given two provision, City of Woodinville, which is fifty foot. And then the city of North Bend, which is more descriptive than nature rather than presenting a. Actual measurement.
Yeah, so I like the Woodinville there, it's very clear, uh, and it's reasonable. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty wide berth that they're being given there every fifty feet. Do you wanna, do you think? Do you think based on the size of our downtown, that most of the buildings are gonna be under the fifty feet?
I think you're gonna have a lot of probably transpositioning between the fifty feet and, and a little larger and a little smaller, and you're gonna get caught in between. But I, I agree, I prefer the Woodinville one, and I think we could probably just hold an impromptu vote between us while we're here. Somebody else like the other ones?
So, so more prescriptive, you're talking about maybe, so what that says is, if you have a fifty-foot facade at every twenty-five feet. Or if you have something that's fifty feet or larger, then every twenty-five feet, you have to have one of these elements in it. That's what, that's what that says to me.
Exactly. How long is this room? Do we know?
Thirty feet or so? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so it's a pretty good distance, fifty feet. I mean, if you've got one long string of a building that's fifty feet, you're gonna wanna broken up somehow.
But if you were to look at city hall, that's fifty feet. Across the frontage, so that would require at least one. Break in articulation throughout that facade.
Which you would. Probably put at the entryway.
Yeah.
Yeah, aesthetically.
Instead of just the blocks with a, with a door on it.
Offsets recesses, projections or other architectural features. So that, the doorway may be an architectural feature.
That's, that's not a burden then, at all.
Yeah, that seems reasonable to me.
But usually it's through, at least, at least the first couple stories. So for city hall, we're all one story, but if you had a multi-story building that was that big. Then the entryway would. Not do it for the whole facade of the building, cause you're trying to break up that whole facade, or at least. At least the first few stories.
You know, in some of the older buildings, just like if you go look uh, in uh, downtown Chahela, some of the older buildings, they'll have a, an expansive brick. Uh, even like on the second level, but and then in the middle of it, there will be some decorative brickwork, you know, some, I don't know, or something.
Yeah, just breaks up the line, yeah.
Yeah, it's a visual, it's just a visual interest there.
I agree. So.
So we like the.
Exceeding fifty feet, twenty-five, okay.
So root line variation.
Do we make a motion to adopt it, wouldn't we?
Well, I think we're just taking notes.
Yeah, just, just a workshop for now, and I'll bring back code. And the code that we're, I'm referencing here is the draft code that we've been working on, so I'll just, just like I did with the residential ones, I'll bring back code that implements those. Based on our discussion tonight.
So again, it seems like Yellam fits our downtown better than the, like historic Port Townsend.
That's what I think.
Definitely. Definitely.
Rebuilding materials and exterior.
Same.
Mm-hmm.
And, right?
Yeah. I mean, more so than the other, than Port Townsend.
Ground level transparency and pedestrian engagement.
Uh, Brian, was there something about it, the, the one, the, the one that we did choose that you didn't like, or you didn't?
Uh, just that we don't, um, no, no, I, I'm okay with it.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
So are we on materials? Or transparency?
Yeah, we're on ground level transparency and pedestrian engagement.
The only real difference is, oh, I see, best, oh, pedestrian engagement.
Well, the sixty percent, so that ten percent, you know better than I do, that glass is expensive, right? Especially if you start increasing the size of it.
Oh, I thought, so it's.
Am I reading that right, that the city of North Bend requires sixty percent, essentially ten percent more transparency in the ground floor?
I knew. Yeah, I, see, I thought I picked one that had a, a less prescriptive standard, but I didn't, they all have blazing percentages. Um, but I, I gave three here to Port Townsend, the Bend, and then the Olympia one. But they're, they're all prescriptive in the amount of blazing, and, and the reason. I was trying to find another one, but I did, but. The prescriptive approach to blazing doesn't work because you have energy code requirements, and then a lot of retailers have different requirements, like if you, if you do a. Um, you know, a sandwich shop or something, and it's an aerospace, then, you know, they, they may actually need some storage room on one side. Of, of there, so they can have a counter, and if they're having customers come in and seating in the long section, you know, so. So glazing over a percentage is difficult. For some users, um, I've, I've worked with users like that, it's like, well, this just doesn't work, what do we do? And a lot of times what they'll do is they'll install the glazing and then they'll, they'll frost it over so you can't see. So it's effectively not effective at providing more visual interest, right? If you look, um, a lot of the, the, um, developments downtown. Said, um.
Most of our development downtown on this side of the street is actually almost hundred percent transparent. Blazing.
Between the, the real estate office and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty percent doesn't seem, if you have a standard facade, I guess, and, and you're ma- making a new building and it's gonna be a retail space, it does. Not seem.
Well, it seems like you're trying to put your product on display that the pedestrian is passing by, so you'd have that visibility anyway.
Right.
Where you have product to display, but, but your, uh, Donna's doesn't have a ton of glazing across the front.
Fair enough.
You don't wanna see who's sitting at the bar stool on a. Or Sunday afternoon instead of being up at church public, right? Yeah, right. So, so, so some, for some users, they like that visibility, and even some bars and taverns like that visibility, but.
Yeah.
Um, but, th- there are other users that it doesn't work for. And I. If, if you look in Beaverton, the town center that's right next to their city hall, they have that requirement along that street frontage, and that's a very busy street frontage, and it doesn't get a lot of pedestrian traffic. So they all have glazing, and they all have either imagery or logos or something painted over them, so you can't see into their storage rooms.
Oh.
Um, but they comply with the.
They comply.
Because they have, they have the glazing glass. So.
You mentioned there was an option you wanted to put, but you didn't put, what was that other?
Well, I, I, I thought it, just requiring, um, glazing to promote. An example of it, I, I thought I did, but I didn't. So just, you know, just requiring, you know, glazing along the frontage at, um. Rather than at a certain percentage of it. To serve a function, you know, to allow visibility into active areas within or something like that, so that way if you have a seating area, active area, right? But if you have a storage area.
Yeah. I think, I think if we can start out with language like that, and then we can always revisit, I think that, that doesn't seem unreasonable to me. The percentage thing does seem a little arbitrary, and then. Kinda jumping the, the gun a little, I don't know.
I think the, the, the key. Portion of the sentence that we'd want to include is to enhance pedestrian visibility and engagement.
Yeah.
But leave the specific requirements of a percentage out.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to include an example of, and I. I don't remember where I found that, but I did find one, and it, it was still prescriptive in that if you have, um, you know, an active area that's open to the public or for merchandise display, then it has to have visibility, and if you don't, then it doesn't have to have that.
I, I think we all tend, we all like that better than what's there, so.
I think for a long time, this, uh. Safety offices were the ones that were dictating. Fasad openings, because the police wanted to be able to see inside. When they went inside a building. And going in a front door with no visibility on the inside was. Pretty much not the way you wanted to do anything if you had a robbery or. And so we actually made inspection tours while we were on duty. Of suggestions on how they could increase the visibility in their store, because eleven's were famous for one hundred percent glazing towards the front and not two.
Okay, well, I. I've got it up there, I can come back with some code and you can adjust it.
Okay.
That's good discussion.
Glazing.
Alright, so entries and.
Yeah, I guess I was surprised that as much as we talked about the waterfront zones and everything, we didn't talk about entry orientate. And I didn't, didn't put anything like that in our codes yet, so.
I think you're so excited about you being. And it's spent a lot of time on the particulars.
But we have years to live with it and modify it.
Those real sidewalk of which to be attached to?
Yes.
Right?
That would be one of your main entrances.
Yeah.
Traffic from the other.
Mm-hmm.
And then somewhere down the road, you gotta have a public parking lot, which probably gonna end up behind city hall.
Hmm, so four-story parking garage with.
Yeah.
Couple thousand spaces.
Uh, yeah, sure.
And added with glazing.
Broken up every twenty-five.
So I do like the Chahela's uh, code piece, I think that, that seems super reasonable, are you guys, are you guys thinking? Uh, what do you think about between that and the yellow one?
Well, and so Chahela's doesn't actually require that the front door be on the street side, it just has to be visible from the street side.
Oh, I see.
So you can actually have it around the corner of a building or something, it's that designed so. Clearly visible from the street and directly connected to sidewalks or pedestrian paths, so.
Most businesses here have their, 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 their main entry in the, on the front, right? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, most of your downtown does.
Okay.
Well, now this building over here with a beauty slot shop, it has an entrance right at the corner, but the bank does not, the bank is over on this, on the main street.
That's right.
Uh, Toledo, the valued, uh, clinic is also facing the street, facing Ramsey, it's not facing the corner, even though it's a corner building.
Those would still qualify, I guess, with the Chahela's, cause they're, they're from the street, or, or actually those are even facing the street, just not. The corners. I'm, I'm intended, uh. To go along there.
On the Chahela's one? Yeah, me too.
Yeah, that looks good.
And then how about that, that Port Townsend one was kinda queuing in on, I think, what we were talking about there with the entry from that waterfront mixed use? Do we wanna require that they have a second entrance, um, along the waterfront?
I think that's reasonable if we get to that point where this is, I mean, this, this is a major change, so everything we do today or half today, right? That's a lot of investment. So at that point, we'd wanna make sure they have two entrances if they, if they get on there.
Well, they're gonna be required to install their portion of the walkway in order to get a building permit to use.
It's hard for retailers to have multiple entrances. I mean, most of the small store owners, especially if it's just a mom and pop shop. They don't have enough people to man both doors and make sure people aren't running out one door while they're back at the other one.
There's the liquor board considerations for multiple entrances.
Oh, there are, really? I didn't know that.
And encourages, or it'll be easier for owner operators to have their own personal entrance in the, in the back to their house and then business up front. Partying in the back, business up front.
Running numbers on the back.
Running numbers.
I was, I was not taking that to be another customer. I was, I just thought it was an entrance for that to park and load up stuff and get in the shop, and then their business would be conducted with the front site where the waterfront.
Yeah.
But it seems like this, this indicates that it's also.
Well, it, it just says pedestrian entrance, so I guess it doesn't say public pedestrian entrance.
Okay.
But I was reading it to be public. But the fact that they said public entrance, not pedestrian entrance in the first part. Maybe they thought about that, or maybe it was an oversight.
Yeah, cause I wouldn't wanna force people to have to man two doors and keep them open all the time, like that would be a little much.
That'd be way too much.
Yeah. And most of that commercial stuff, you're gonna see, it's gonna be redevelopment down there along your waterfront.
Well, what I could see happening is they end up connecting a small path between the riverfront and taking you around to the front door of their building. By going one, down one side of the building or the other. You know, you'd have landscaping and a path, and that path would connect to the riverfront, and the path would continue around to the front of the building.
I would imagine that would happen, even out of. Consistency of the traffic, and they call it desire path, where people just walk that way anyways. It wears down.
Okay, so maybe. Specifying that it doesn't have to be a public entrance out in the waterfront.
Yeah.
But, but to have them required to have a pedestrian entrance.
It's, I mean, kind of sounds reasonable.
We'll see how it looks in code. Uh, six shelters, onings. Rain shelter and onings. Along sidewalks and.
Or versus making them do it along their entire frontage.
So maybe just making that part of their entry requirements.
Right.
Um, but you talk about. Entry placement, pedestrian accessibility, maybe require either recessed entries or oning, rain protection over. And.
Yep.
Alright, so with that, I think I can. I'll, I'll come up with some code and.
Yeah, how about you, Ron? What do you think of the whole mess?
Yeah, I'm midnight. So at our meeting two weeks ago, we gave, uh, if you're already moving to critical areas, we gave kind of an introduction to critical areas, and you met Francis, and he talked about some of the changes to the wetlands and habitat pieces. And now he's gonna go away and work on, on that for a bit, um, and he'll be back, uh, probably. It would probably be, uh, April, April, May-ish, um, with some draft code and some draft comp by language. Um, so in the meantime, I figured I would bring geologic hazard areas and critical recharge areas to you.
It was all oak tree thing, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Oh, I knew how they all trees.
I just planted one of those oaks today.
Are part of the, yeah, that's the habitat, yeah.
Uh, Todd, I noticed something, and, and at, at first I thought it must be a mistake, but, but I, I see it over and over, uh, to the term, the word. Braves, city of Toledo. Daft, critical areas. Is that supposed to be daft?
Or draft?
Draft.
Draft. Okay, it, it shows up each time as daft, and I thought.
Oh, you know what? Is that in my footer? Is that why every? Um, let me see what, oh, yeah. I, that must be in the footer, I'm trying to open that document now, but. Oh, that's why. So, um, as we had discussed. I started with Lewis County's code. Um, so this includes kind of the, the preamble where it sets up a lot of the, the codes and the structure for how it's enforced and, and interpreted. Um, and that's article one. And then when you're when you're talking about that, um. And then. I did include in the some comments in there. Um, some of these require input, some of these are just for me when I'm editing. Critical news in Toledo.
Well, like administrator.
Yeah, well, and and that was a question, I originally had city clerk. In there in place of administrator. Uh, but I went through and I I basically changed, you you know, um, anything that the county had in their code to deal with the decision authority, I just changed it to the term administrator. So now we can just define administrator, so we can say the administrator is the mayor, it is the city clerk. We can say the administrator is um and and keeping in mind that whoever we say is the administrator can always delegate their authority. So if we say that the mayor is the administrator, then the mayor is the administrator, but if the mayor needs. A planner to go research this, that she can say, hey, Todd, go go do this and tell me what you think and and give me a staff report, you know. So it doesn't actually have to be that person that does it, but you have to have somebody with the authority to do it. But the the reason I didn't go with city clerk is I I was I was ready to put it in there, uh and then I was remembering, oh, yeah, that's right, when I stepped into this role. We were cleaning up a lot of stuff and that was a previous person that. With great intention, uh just didn't have an understanding of all the requirements of this stuff, so it was just all flying by, so I thought. Maybe it's not good to list city clerk, maybe it's good to list an administrator now and then we can. Either have council define if that's going to be, and they can then change one section and it changes the whole. By having administrator, we can say for the purpose of this section administrator shall be.
Right.
This. Um, but I don't know who that should be, I mean, I I feel very comfortable working with with Rachel and I know that. That she knows what she knows and when she doesn't, she gives me a call and says, hey, can you help me out? So it's not like the last city clerk, so it may just be that administrator is the city clerk.
Well, as I was reading through.
I don't know. But even if Rachel is your administrator for the purpose of this code, she just has to know who to call. Right? She's the one responsible for for doing it, so her signature appears on all the decisions and everything, so she has to understand it enough to sign it. But it's not, she doesn't have to do all the work and and she certainly doesn't have to know all the all the pieces.
And we have AI.
So as a citizen, observing how Toledo works. Generally speaking, council people and the mayor are a volunteer group. And they aren't present to the extent that staff is. So if if I were choosing, I would lean towards a permanent employee. In that role, not not an elected. Person.
Who can delegate, like you said, so she can delegate that, yeah, she can delegate on the staff, so it's not on her shoulders.
Yeah.
And I do work really well with Todd, if again, I'm not gonna put. I kind of came in the half conversation, but yeah, I'm not gonna, if I know it, I know it, if not, I I go to Todd, so.
So I, you know, and even in Calama, they say, um. The administrator. The administrator in that case is the city administrator, that's what they call Adam, their city manager. I can sign staff reports in there because Adam was saying, Todd, review this and write a staff report. So so that so we can put that in in code that way, so the um administrator, we can define that as the city clerk and. Um, or their. Their. I'm using the wrong word there, it doesn't sound right.
Designate.
Designate. So, um, I don't know if anybody had any questions or comments, the the first section, I mean, other than the question about who is going to be the administrator. I I think that was a good discussion on there and I I'll just put the city clerk, it's in the definition section is the administrator of the code.
Sounds good.
Or their designate. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know if you had any more comments on that on that first section. There's a lot there.
Yeah, I think I had a question about the, I'm not sure if that was the exact section, but there's a, you only need one permit. When you're doing the land use uh sort of permit, it doesn't, you don't have to do other. State requirements and all that type of stuff for the CIPA things, or is that all part of the, I don't know that much about it, but is that all part of the same uh sort of permitting request?
It. So any of these actions may also require state level permits, which we can't bundle up with ours.
Right.
Um, but. What the code is in here saying is is where. Is that these requirements are triggered by an underlying land use and all of this is processed together with that, you don't have a special. And it has its pluses and minuses, when somebody wants to go through and get something done. For them to have to prepare two application packages and and submit different things oftentimes in duplicate for each package. It's cumbersome, but in other cases, a developer wants to just know, can I get a critical areas permit for this? So they might apply for just that permit by itself, what this code is saying is that. You just submit one application package and you have to address these elements if your project includes critical areas.
I won't determine if it's touching critical areas or not, and they require further uh studies, what have.
The studies and everything it lays out in here, if you're in one of these, it's required, right? But but so when we review it, we'd say, yeah, you have to submit this with your application. But we're not requiring a separate permit process for it.
And so when it requires something like a biological study or um ecosystem adverse effects and that sort of thing, who reviews that? If if it's going through the city, do we have resources to evaluate that and certify all the state, or how does that work?
We have to get a specialist.
So so you. You have choices there and in different jurisdictions that I work in, they do different things. Mo- none of the small jurisdictions, well, even Chehalis doesn't have a wetlands biologist on staff.
Wow.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have anybody that's qualified to review a wetland study or a habitat analysis, even in Chehalis, so none of the cities that I work in. Have that, um larger cities, you know, like uh like Vancouver City, Vancouver does have somebody that's qualified to review those, Clark County does, um. I don't know if Lewis County does or not. I don't think so, um but in in any case, what they do is they just accept the word of the qualified professional on behalf of the applicant. So the qualified professional in here is defined and it has to be somebody that has familiarity with doing these things. And they have a certain level of trust, right? Because they're a hired professional and. And you just trust them and if their report says this is. This will meet that criteria, then you trust them, um if you don't trust them, then you can always go out and. And hire a third party reviewer and that's in here too that. If they're. If they meet the straight face test or not.
Yeah.
Um, and I have seen some that don't.
Yes.
We had to do, we had to do one for our property and it's hard to find someone to do this, it's very expensive too, but it's. There's not very many people in the area that actually are that are. And and it's not a license, but it's a certification that are actually certified to do them.
Yeah, when I was talking to, uh, well, I had to look, talk to a geotechnical consultant to do to do a study, but somebody has to review that report that you're paying for and then say. Yes, this makes sense, you're not just paying somebody to write something so that you can get it done.
Well, the review happens, I mean, I I review all the reports, it's just, I'm not technically qualified to analyze them for their accuracy. And when they go out for CIPA, they go out, those documents get published out to state agencies and other things.
Right.
Um, but yeah, in many of the jurisdictions, I mean, a sharp wetlands biologist could probably. Glaze me over pretty easily just by saying something is something that it's not, and I would never know. You know, I I I suck at tree identification and I don't know, I mean, I. And I know the difference between what's an edible salmon and what's something else, but that's, you know, I. Don't look down into a stream bed and and identify all the fish that are in there either, so. There's a level of trust or there's not, and you can choose to do that as a city, you can say that we're gonna hire a third party reviewer for these and then you can hire a third party reviewer. You can make it at your discretion so that that way if there's, you know, if somebody takes a look at it, it's like, yeah, I'm not too sure about this, this seems a little bit outlandish. Or if one of the state agencies challenges it too, then they're. They can debate it with their consultant can then debate it with the state agencies. So there's.
How do they get involved?
Through CIPA.
Oh, I see, if there's, okay.
Wouldn't, there's this, there's almost always a CIPA, there's, most of your flexible exemptions don't apply in critical areas.
Okay.
So whenever there's a critical area.
And that's really what I was trying to understand, is at some point, someone has to check these claims in some way, so somebody says, no, the uranium is not gonna hurt anybody in town. We're just gonna store it behind this building and it looks great on paper, but somebody surely. It's gonna have to look at this so that we we can, you know, we're making the right decision here.
Yeah, well, and and you have qualified professionals, I mean, right now, I mean, you. You know, Mike Johnson might look at the geotech. Pieces, but he's not a geotechnical engineer, you know, he's a general civil engineer, so he's got a lot of experience to deal with these things and probably just like me, he can kind of spot. He can spot something glaringly wrong, but.
So do some cities actually include in the cost of that permitting, cause they usually say it's at your cost that you do the study. And then there may be some fees as we review it, does that mean they're hiring somebody to do the review? Is that normal in your experience?
Um, it's. I've never met a consulting. Geotech or a wetlands biologist that does what I do. That is on contract with the city to do those reviews. Um, I have in in some cases, we've got things that don't quite meet the straight face test, so we have hired a third party reviewer and. And then the applicant pays for that as well as paying to generate the study in the first place.
That's what I, that's what, that's what I was, but I see, it seems to me then, and this, I'll be naive here, it seems to me that CIPA is designed to catch that essentially. Because it does bubble up through there in some way, so that that there will be some oversight, it's something worth looking at.
So it's a face test down here and smell test of a CIPA.
Yeah, kind of what it sounds like, right? And if it's something really. Strange, we should have probably language in there to that we may wanna hire somebody just to give it a once over before. We, if it looks, if it's something unusual, do we have a way of mechanism in there that we can?
Funny, cause I would imagine.
Sure of something.
I would imagine a lot of DNR staff would be qualified for that. It's funny to hear that there's not a, that's hard to find folks to do that.
Well, DNR, um.
Some.
Yeah, for for wetlands and habitat.
Yeah, yeah.
Some are better than others, right?
Of course, yeah, but still, some.
Almost anybody that spends a lot of time working in that industry, they're probably some, they're probably better qualified than I am, at least they can identify different trees.
Sure.
Yeah, my niece is actually studying this, she's doing environmental engineering and that's where I'm at, but it's. These are not glamorous jobs.
Remember that when I was.
Lot of hard work.
Lot of hard work and not a lot of big pay, it it's a, and you have to go to this location.
You need to be the owner of the company.
Well, in that case.
Because, I mean, that's where the money is, signing wetlands.
Yeah, so. I I will be sure that we have included, I remember it being in here, but I can't find it now. Um, but I'll make sure that we have the option to engage third party reviewers for critical areas enforcement.
Right.
At the applicant's expense.
Yes.
Yeah, what you try to do is you're trying to try to find that biological engineer design guy. That has a company and he meets up with a biologist who lives for the trees. And I've I've done a lot of wetlands construction on that. They can make your life miserable and they can make your life wondrous.
Right.
But uh you get one of those, I love to play in the dirt ones.
Yeah. It's my favorite guppy. Yeah.
So did you ever put rootwoods into swamps to, uh, you know, develop your wetlands?
Make an habitat. I'm sorry?
Great big old rootwoods and dead trees into yours.
Oh, we've had to do, uh, you you name it and we've had to do it.
Okay.
It's unbelievable, the stuff that they ask you to do. But, you know, and and you end up with wetlands that are like six inches, there's nine different wetlands plains and they're all six inches difference in elevation.
As much as that guy likes to play in the dirt, he's not the guy that made the oak rule.
Traumatized because it's.
Traumatized from that oak.
So I I did flag in here and and this kind of gets back to that discussion of when these are required, um in the Lewis County code, the the draft that I use as the basis for this. Um, I'm on. Page.
Oh, I didn't include. Yeah, I don't have page number. Oh, yeah, the top top right.
Page two of twenty. Um. Section two, application process. Um, no separate application, which is what I recall, but then I I did note here activities in an area. Or it's associated buffer, do not require another permit, they'll be processed, that's a land use permit approval. We don't really have a land use permit approval process. Um, but there's, if there's no building permit required, then. No harm, no foul, nobody's gonna know that they're triggering a a wetland or habitat regulation if they're not requiring a permit, most people won't. You know, so so I I was thinking maybe we would just use, um. That. Level of even a building permit.
But what if they wanna use the land for something other than building, they just wanna dispose of waste on it or something like that? Or store uh old cars, a junkyard, I don't know, of all that kind of stuff.
We don't really, um, don't really try to, I mean, other than nuisance code. We don't really enforce what somebody can do with their own property, I mean, if you have a commercial business and you're and you're hauling in car hulks, that's gonna take a land use permit approval.
Right.
Um, but if 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 you're just. Like me and you've got a couple of old cars sitting in your backyard.
Yeah.
That's not really regulated.
I was thinking more in the commercial sense, like if you're using a piece of land, don't you have to?
If if you're. If you're gonna do it commercially, then you have to have a business license and then through the business license, you can decide, oh. Well, you're changing the use of that building and now you're gonna use that property for this, or 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 you require. I mean, technically, you do trigger the need for a land use permit when you're doing that.
That's what I'm thinking.
In place. Um, most of yours is triggered through your building permit.
Got it.
Reviews.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so so that's. For us, that's. But we don't really have a land use permit approval process.
Okay, I got one for you. I own five acres of land. Uh, to take tickets and. Dig all the dirt and make trout go in there. Where do I get my land use permit for that?
Well, um, if if you're doing it for your own personal enjoyment and you're not doing it in a critical area, then you don't need a permit for that unless you move more than fifty cubic yards of dirt. Um, in which case you trigger the need for a grading permit.
True, okay, and Army Corps of Engineers takes over after a certain number of.
Not, not if you're, not if you're just building it in an upland area. Ah, you can make an upland area wet.
Can't fill in a lowland area.
You can't fill in a pond because those are waters of the state if they meet the Army Corps of Engineers criteria. But you're free to dig out an area and make it wet and put fish in it.
But if you do that, by the way, so I found this out when I was talking to this lady who's a a designer of septics and he said. If, cause I was planning to make a a sort of a. A pond, and so she said, well, the pond is over, it it can be seen from a satellite picture. When they do the satellite pictures and they see it there, it can and they see it, they can start regulating it as a wetland.
Oh, it's even worse, the roadside ditches that they put in for the state highways are now regulated wetlands.
There you go. Put some trees.
In a lot of cases.
I had, I had some construction products.
All of Toledo's a wetland at this point, we're always.
They, so they made a decision that the truck tracks. That over the winter in the mud created a divot which then held water which later had water foul in it and became waters of the.
Was it the Perry shrimp?
Yeah, ducks.
Get those with this, we're just saying if. Give those with this. We're just saying if there's no, if there's no building permit required. We're not gonna look at this, but it's still illegal to do illegal things.
What sounds good.
That's kind of generally the way I took this and with that edit. Um we will take out the requirement for a land use permit for things. I don't know why the county had that in there. It's not required as far as I know. Let me see. Did anybody else have any questions about that first section?
No.
We had qualified professional in there.
I think we may be phasing out a little bit.
Okay, yeah. I.
At least me, I'm speaking for myself.
That's okay. So article two, activities allowed without a critical areas permit. The county actually had a bunch of them in there, but I was surprised that they got included in some of these, so. Good on you for that and um. But there's, so basically these are just saying, this is what you're allowed to do, and then it says, these are the things that are exempt from permits.
And what page are you on there?
Um so now I'm on six of twenty, again, to article two.
Okay.
Bottom of six of twenty.
Thanks. Okay.
Oh, and so. The county cited existing agricultural activities um consistent with an ongoing stewardship program. And I'm not aware if Toledo has any sort of a a wetlands stewardship program or anything.
That's great.
Go ahead, I I don't, I don't need one. I just had one on the way up, so I'm good.
Okay.
Um.
I'm not aware of anything like that.
So I I I thought I'd ask you all um. So.
Voluntary stewardship program.
Yeah, so I'm on um, see, I'm on page seven of twenty. And it's uh bullet C.
Yeah.
With that comment on there. Um.
But we don't have anything defining that anywhere.
I don't think you have a stewardship program. Um the county has obviously one because they said. Consistent with the Lewis County stewardship program, so they must have a countywide program that.
Oh, do you think you just found, find replace Lewis County and put Toledo in there or something?
Yes, yep. Well, and in this, and then I. Would seem to apply. I mean, you don't have any. Um. Lahar flows or any other things here that. Oh, I don't know. Commissioner, you wanna give? So when you, when you uh when you have a forest practice permit and you're logging to convert it from forest practices into some other use.
Got it.
That's the class four general forest practices.
News domain.
For that C, I don't know.
Does that ring any bells for you, Cindy? Back in the day in your planning commission days? Stewardship program? I don't remember ever reading that.
So I think. Period. And I'm gonna just delete that last section because we don't have a stewardship program. Either agricultural or wetland or habitat, so.
I'm gonna say the Lewis County agricultural stewardship program list.
Yeah, well, they may not have one either, but it's in their code. Okay, I'll try to keep things moving here. Like I said, there there were actually a lot of good exemptions and words in there um. Oh, so I I left all the the wetland classifications in there the same. That's my note on the side. Um kind of a note to myself, but also I flag it for you. Those are um state. Level wetland classifications that are adopted in many manuals. I don't think we'll change the naming on those, but. Um so I'm keeping all those the same throughout. So then I I get down from. From there, we we kind of dive into some of the aqua recharge areas. Um. Aqui recharge areas are areas around wells that are regulated generally. Um so they're concerned about groundwater within a certain radius and there are a few. I think there's a city. There's a municipal well right here across the bridge. There's just not too far from here. So a lot of your downtown. Is within or a chunk of your downtown is within that regulated areas. Gas stations and things like that usually aren't in those areas.
Mm-hmm.
Um and in fact, this new code will prohibit those underground storage tanks for fuels and other things.
About all they prohibit though.
Oh, no.
Lifestyle on top of it.
No, I I I talked with county about this because we have a large number of aquifers down my road. And I was concerned because one of the guys started raising cattle.
Hmm.
Right there. And I said, well, I thought there was a problem with animals. We do not enforce any of the aquifers around here. You wanna put a house on it, put a house on it. That's the only thing we don't allow is gas tanks.
Oh, there's. So if we look in here, they 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 have different categories. They have the category one, um the category two, category three. But then they have a whole list of prohibited.
Yeah.
Um.
Which is good, I think.
Prohibited activities, yeah, we're. When you're allowed to have cattle grazing. You can't have agricultural drainage wells though. So if you're draining something out of your barn and it's going into a injection well into the ground or pipe. You can't do that in an aqua recharge area.
Like a pig lagoon.
Um.
No, I think those stop.
Yeah, and if you're gonna, if you're gonna have sewage injected into the ground, then you have to have it pre-treated, which is why they usually do the sand filters instead of the. In the ground ones.
Pumps into the air all over them, all over the.
You get some on your arm when you drive by.
No, no wood product preserving treatment facilities. Um you can't store or dispose of radioactive substances, so no uranium.
Okay, there's a lot of things that they don't.
Also, um in Massachusetts, there. It there was literally had the state had to hand out, still handing out plastic bottles to all the residents in the area. Cause there was some paint uh manufacturer local. But where, but people are just, it's the clusters of diseases that are coming up. It's out of hand.
Oh.
So it's like, those things are, and they, of course, they did for fifty years or whatever, and nobody knew anything.
My wife and I took a an antique trip to Ohio to go to all the pottery and stuff back there and uh. And one of the main rivers there, we sent off for some of their tourist stuff. And their big onus was that we've done such a good job of cleaning our river, nearly twenty percent will sustain life.
We are so lucky to live. Easter, so I took all the industrial uh work that to get to the. It's so crazy.
Golf courses are also prohibited, so none of that.
Okay.
Within aqua recharge areas.
I'll be fine. And the dry cleaners.
Yeah, I'll get that too. Motor vehicle service, orages, repair shops, gasoline stations, auto washing facilities.
I retract my comment.
H pipelines, okay. Well, so so there's a a long list of them in there. So that um that's all recharge areas. Uh let me see if you just scroll through and see if I had any questions. I think most of my questions were in the geologic hazard.
I'm just joking.
Yeah, me too. That's a cut. I mean, that's from county code. Um. So moving on to article four, uh geologic hazard areas um. There's. This is Lewis County's adopted code and all I've done is delete stuff. I haven't modified any of the. Terminology other than changing city to county and administrator and other such things. Uh the question I had were the mine hazard areas. Um that was in the county. There were some of these that they had in there and they said. This only applies in the county in these areas, so I deleted that section out, cause.
Gravel pits.
Gravel pits and.
Yeah, the gravel pit of mine.
But do we have any within the city of Toledo's city limits?
No.
So so we don't need code that regulates mine hazard areas. Okay, I will delete that section too.
And we don't have any in the five oh five going up to the five either.
Not that I have one.
Nope.
Just gravel pads.
But you got, that's still not on that route.
Toledo, Washington mining mines. Toledo, Washington includes zero nearby mines.
Well, there it is.
Well, that was an easy search. They they have a whole long list of maps and historic maps for everything from everything.
And I think these mines have records of the long, cause there are people who actually still wanna buy these properties and go into these places. This is just even left.
So the um the volcanic hazard areas um. I did update that reference, cause I went to the reference that they had on the web and looked at it and it wasn't there anymore. So I just went to the. Um depart- Department of Natural Resources and found where their mapping was, so I'm referencing that now. Um and you can tell the two that I modified there, cause it's visited on March third, um so that I. Looking reference. Um. It looks like I also did that for. Steep slope landslide hazards. Those are actually mapped in in Lewis County's GIS. I don't know why. I think they just referenced it here, then this is what they use in their GIS.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know. That they cited. That that is what I use when I review projects, bullet Lewis County GIS and see, does this site have any of that on there and if they don't. Uh-huh. Um I, the volcanic hazard areas too, that was fairly generic and I I thought. That's what the county has, so maybe it's okay for Toledo, but also I know that it's kind of a real thing up in this neighborhood, so.
Just do.
Just do, right, right, right.
When there's a hell.
Yeah. So I, but I don't know if that language seems sufficient to you or if you wanted more in there. Um.
It's sufficient.
Okay.
I thought.
Should be okay for a hundred years or so.
Um and and they had the the volcanic ash wasn't um considered a volcanic hazard. So if you're in a volcanic ash area, not a hazard. I, hazardous to a lot of people, so I.
Shorelines and rivers.
Yeah.
Ash, that's what's gonna happen, so.
Um so I'm gonna also delete the section on standards for mine hazard studies since we don't have any.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I've got myself a note there. And then with that, unless there was any other comments or discussion on any of that. And this isn't your last chance. I mean, this is code. I'll come back next time with the complaint policies, beginning of the critical areas sections.
Mm-hmm.
And. You can, just just like with the the standards. So if that's all you have for me, then um that's all that I have for you. In our next meeting, I'll bring back complaint sections for these. I'll bring back some code language for that. Um and then I might try to sweep in the flood hazards, those section two. And cause you're, you already referenced the county standards and you're just basically doing the same thing, placing there's and adopting it into your own code.
Yeah.
Um.
Todd, can I make a request?
Sure.
So is it possible to bring like a little uh checkbox line by line of all the chapters we need to go through, just?
Oh, absolutely.
Just so that we have it, I just would like to definitely make sure that when we're scheduling these additional meetings, we're kind of, our our eyes on the on the ball, so it doesn't get frustrating.
Rachel and I have been working on.
A lot.
On the grant deliverables thing, which is exactly that in a different format, so I'll just simplify that format and I can bring it.
Or maybe like just a quick note, um with each section, what you're looking for on guidance for, like I'm looking.
I'm using comments.
Yeah, that's where I was looking in the comments.
Yeah.
The rest of that stuff.
And you already added me, never mind. I didn't even notice those.
The comments in the margins are the main things that I'm not really sure about.
Okay.
But of course, we can talk about anything.
Yes, I can read the whole thing. If I notice anything, I'll ping on it and if not, I'll see his comments, so.
Perfect.
All right, anybody, any public comment? I get a motion to adjourn.
You have it.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Eating a drink.
What was my fault?